We are back in, uh, coming into our workshop for Wednesday, May 27th at 2:00 PM. It is 2:21. Call this meeting to order? Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
None here, Mr. Chair.
I have none.
Have a motion, please.
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Second?
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes?
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Next is three projects, a discussion of potential revenue sources. Ms. Schmelzer?
Yes, so, um, we've talked about this in the past, that there's been some, you know, there was research by a revenue task force, um, there was one, an economic development committee years ago that would look at potential revenue sources. There's also a group that worked on something called the Big Fix, and, um, so I thought we would just bring it back to the board, um, and some of you have also asked, uh, have discussions about some of these items, basically ways that we can find revenue for the county. I know, um, we've talked a little bit in the past about should there be a consumption tax, should there be a gas tax, should we increase the transient lodging tax? I know there's been discussions about assessments, is there something we can do on that end? So what I did was I just pulled a little information for you together to help us or begin those conversations, but I'll start with the transient lodging tax, 'cause I think that's probably the most recent one that we've looked at, um, when it was adopted last year. There has been some concern or some comments, I think, about, uh, two things regarding the transient lodging tax, and one is, um, is there a disparity there with the unincorporated areas and harbor hotels basically paying, um, into a transient lodging tax where a good portion is benefiting the event center? And should we be looking at perhaps giving the event center a different percentage than what we do right now? Um, you know, one thought is, do we pay what the city is paying? So, I think we need to look at some of that stuff. Some of the other conversations about the transient lodging tax was, um, should it be increased and should there be an additional percentage put on top of the cities? For example, should the transient lodging tax in Crey County be 9% across the board? And if a city is at 7%, that additional 2% goes to the county? Do we raise the county up to 9%? Or what are those numbers? Is that something we even look at? So I think we need to look at, uh, have some discussion on that. As far as consumption taxes, um, I did pull off the most recent data that we have, um, from Travel Oregon. Dean Runyon does a lot of economic development data for Travel Oregon, and, you know, in the past, last year, around election time, we talked about a consumption tax on, and should that be on visitors, I think people that did not live here. We do have up-to-date numbers on what the visitors spend on, at food stores, you know, if we wanted to look at potentially a tax on, on that. We also have the data on what the visitors are spending on food service, and we also have information on what the visitors are spending on gas. Or is it something where we want to prov- do this as a countywide tax to everyone? Or do we want to just stick to it with visitors? Um, so I do have those numbers for you if you want to have discussions on that. There was some discussion about gas tax. I don't have the gas tax, uh, volumes with me, but I believe, um, Commissioner Pash, you might have had some of that. And then, um, there was questions on something to consider was, is there, what, what can we do to help with assessments? Or some questions to get more assessments going here? And then, the other thing that I just have here as a possible idea, um, and it's not really to bring tax revenue in, it's more to get things done. I know in the past we've talked about ways to help the port, and one idea when you're, kind of on the same line when you're talking about transient lodging taxes, there's something that's called a hospitality zone, where perhaps the whole port area and harbor becomes a hospitality zone, and there's a fee, not a tax, assessed on businesses there, and then those fees go to help improve that area. Kind of like an urban renewal, but that uses a tax, of course. And then, other ideas, there's been ideas about perhaps, uh, raising the fees on fishing licenses, some of those things. So, um, I guess, it's your meeting, I just want to let you know, I do have some information here to help guide us through these conversations, um, and just kind of see what direction you want to go.
Commissioner Gold?
Uh, I've actually given this quite a bit of thought, and I think we're missing a lot of the low-hanging fruit here, uh, with regards to building permits, um, assessments and so forth, and, and I just kind of have some questions here. Can we compare assessments to permits? So that the properties that have conditional permits that have not been updated could be reassessed? And the reason this question came to mind is because recently someone reported to me that they knew of a homeowner who had very low property taxes in the same area they were in, and the reason they were having these low property taxes is because they were considered, uh, unoccupied. So basically what's happening here, things aren't being updated. Could we make sure that all county properties with existing structures have permits? And somehow we need to be able to coordinate between the various departments, our building department, our planning department, our, the assessor's office, and that's one of the reasons I was very pro getting that program, that, uh, well, it included a whole lot more than dog licenses. That's why I was interested in, in supporting that. Is it possible for assessments to be caught up with the new software? I think we have to have some sort of accountability there. Can we make sure that, hey, we're getting our bang for our buck? What would it take to do this? Do we need maybe some more help? I don't know, but this is low-hanging fruit that we're missing. Are all county properties assessed equitably? The reason this came to mind is because it's been reported to me that we have, um, all of the Borax property, um, all of that property, even though it's within the city boundaries and ready to be developed, was paying less property tax than an individual who lived adjacent to that property with a lot less acreage, like five, eight acres. So I thought, well, that needs to be investigated. Uh, another question that came to mind is, how soon is it possible to get planning slash permits, assessments and code enforcement information into digital form so that these departments can work together? As I see it, they need to be working together so that, things need to be coordinated, so that all the properties in the county are in compliance and also being assessed fairly. Six, are we assessing properties for their best possible use? And this brings me back to the Borax property, that's kind of been set up so that they could put a thousand homes there, essentially. Is it being taxed for its best possible use? I don't know the answer to the question, whether we can tax for the best possible use or whether it's forestry grazing or, or whatever, but obviously that's going to be developed here soon. Would it help to update our comprehensive plan and zoning map and then zoning codes? We've talked about this a little bit, where we realize that there's not enough housing here in Crey County, therefore some of the zoning is going to have to change, but that takes a long time with public hearings, et cetera. And finally, I would just like to say that I doubt that individuals in the county are going to be willing to increase their property tax rates if they see that the county, until they see that the county is up to speed with assessments and permitting. As for TLT taxes, uh, I just booked a motel room, and that was up in the Salem area. They are charging 12% TLT tax, and I haven't been to any other motel that's charged less than 10. So, as far as TLT, I think we'd be missing the boat if we don't go for at least 10%. I, I think that's doable. And I think most people would be apt to vote for that. Those are my comments.
Commissioner Boyce, you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I promoted a serious research of the consumption tax based on the million dollars that could come over from Delano County, primarily shopping in, uh, South County, Brookings area, Harbor, and, uh, it's the fairest tax you can possibly have, uh, for the, for the low-income folks that have few funds, uh, the, uh, non-labeled foods would be exempt, so if they were buying healthy foods, uh, they wouldn't have to pay any tax on them. That was all pretty broad and, uh, but I don't think I would support anything right now. And probably for a reasonable extended time, because we don't know what's going to happen to even discuss, in my opinion, uh, a raise in the lodging tax fee, when so many of our lodging facilities, uh, throughout the county are in a tremendous bind. Some of them we know won't make it, uh, which goes back to the CARES refund act from the federal government, how we can help those businesses as our number-one priority. Before you come on board, uh, I pushed back as hard as I could on additional fees for planning and building, thought the timing was not good. I said very clearly during that time, "We don't know where this great economy's going. Can we hold off a little while?" Now, I will openly admit that it didn't seem to, uh, to hurt at the time, but now it is hurting, uh, because people are pulling back on their investments, people are pulling back on their remodels, um, they're less apt to want to pay higher fees. So, the TLT, the consumption tax, uh, our state government is talking about 10% reduction. I'm very happy that you are looking at additional resources. I'm not in any way negative or complaining about that, I think that's wise. I'm just, I'm just looking at where we are as a rural county in this corner of Oregon right now, with what our people are dealing with. I, I, I see no reason to really hope that we can, at least for six months, and I think probably 18 months, that we can really look to having any higher fees, and if we talk about a transient lodging 12%, I think that'd be just to push some of our people over the edge that are trying to employ people and have lodging facilities keep, keep, uh, keep well-established, so. Every day's a new adventure, we just got to watch close and, uh, be extremely careful what message we send to our citizens, and be well-advised to watch and see who needs help, and if there's a way, hopefully we can assist. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gold?
My understanding of a TLT tax is the motel owners do not pay it, it's the people booking the rooms that pay it. And I know when I book a room, I just expect to pay it, that's, you're not going to look on Expedia.com or wherever you look for your rooms and expect not to pay a tax. At least that's been my experience.
Commissioner Boyce?
Well, the only thing I'd add to that is that we're in fierce competition with Newport, Eureka, Bend, uh, and so, people are going to go where they are not hit too hard. I agree, we all pay that tax, but at the end of the bill, we're looking at going, 25 bucks? I just paid extra for this room? So it does have an impact, in my opinion, so, um, timing is everything. Thank you again.
I can, uh, I can show you bills from pretty much hotels in Bend and Eugene and, uh, California that, in recent weeks and months. Eugene not only has a lodging tax, they also have a city tax, um, in their, on their hotel bills. Bend has a city and county tax on their bills. So, um, you know, I think everyone is doing it now, it's just a matter of, uh, of how, how deep you want to go. You know, this, this workshop, I, I actually spoke with Ms. Schmelzer about, and, and we really, um, I was excited to, to get people to start to talk, you know, we're not trying to come up with something today on this, it's just to start a conversation about how we're going to fill the shortfalls of the county. You know, would I like to see a ballot measure in the fall on something? Yes, I would, but I, I want to be clear that my intention for this, uh, raising of, of, of money for, on this particular issue is for our sheriff's department. We need to find a way to permanently fund the essential services of the sheriff's department, and I don't know if that is, um, coming up with, uh, you know, some kind of a levy or some kind of, I don't know the words on, on all the government ways on how they do that, but we need to come up with a way to fund the sheriff's department, that he knows every year where he's going to be, kind of like these special districts, uh, that they get, you know, that 3% a year raise, and they know right where their budget's going to be every year, and they can plan. We need to find ways to make sure that our sheriff is, um, is funded. As you probably read, they, um, through the smart thinking of a Crey County deputy the other day, they caught a, a wanted felon here in, uh, in Crey County, uh, through a sharp eye and a smart deputy and well-trained.
Good stuff.
Crime is going to increase in this county, and he has to have the wherewithal and the equipment to run that department and, and be able to protect the citizens of this county, and I think that is probably, in my opinion, probably the biggest job that, that we have is to protect the citizens of this county. To raise taxes, it's a sore subject here, but we've got to find a way to pay for the essentials of this county. I would hope that people are seeing that this board, Ms. Schmelzer and the, and the people in our offices now are working hard-looking for grants, as you heard Mr. Christiansen this morning, um, all the grants that he's worked at to get the county is, is functioning, I believe, much harder than it has, uh, in past years of recent, and, um, we've got it, we've got to find some ways to pay the bills of this county, especially the essential bills. You know, we've heard the governor say, "Well, you've got that road fund, and if you won't spend it, I will." So, you know, that road fund is for emergencies like the towers, um, but when that came up, you know, when, we, when we get a county road that goes out, we need that money there to protect the citizens of this county, so to keep tapping that road fund and trying to say that we're going to loan, uh, or borrow the money and loan it back, um, that's not a, that's not a viable future for this county. I, I would just like everyone to start to think, and I would hope that if we have another workshop in the future on this, that we could get some business minds. I think everyone on this board would be open to hearing, uh, from the business minds of this county, that let's sit down and have a workshop and start to talk about, you know, some of the things that we can do. Uh, I did look into a gas, you know, looking into a gas tax, um, to, for the entire county that everyone paid fairly into. Uh, it wouldn't be just the citizens that live here, um, it would be anyone that, that visits the city, we would all pay fairly into that tax, and, uh, you know, these are things we can look at, we can also look at a property tax. I think a property tax would have a hard time going through, I just, I, I don't know that it would, that it would go through. Commissioner Boyce came up with a, um, a prepared food tax, a couple of years ago, I know you were talking about that. Again, that would probably hit the tourists a lot more har- a lot harder than it would hit the locals. We've got a lot of seniors in this county that live on very tight budgets, um, that live paycheck, you know, paycheck to paycheck and/or social security to social security, so we've got to be very careful with that, but we've also got to find, we've got to find that, that blend, that mix where, you know, no one pays too much, but we still get the, the bills paid for the county. So I would, I don't know, I don't, can we organize better, maybe, a, a meeting, a workshop that we could invite, you know, people to come in and just business minds of this county that have, um, just a lifetime of business, and sit down and begin to talk about something that we could put on a ballot and a measure, um, to, that would pass, that would work?
Yeah, I, I think-
Reasonable.
I think we have to, um, have a little direction on, you know, what type of idea we'd want them to talk about, um, rather than just an open slate. For example, um, because I think your group that's going to discuss perhaps increasing a transient lodging tax is probably going to be different than your group that's going to discuss maybe a food tax. But, just as we were talking, I just, um, have some data to, for you, some updated, we were talking about Bend versus some of these other areas, so I do have those numbers in front of me if you want them, but since, um, Assessor's Colin is here, maybe we could talk about, um, I, and I told him that we, there was probably going to be some questions about assessments, maybe we could talk about some of those assessment questions first, and then move on to maybe discussing each tax one by one to see which direction we want to go? Do you want to do that?
Sure.
Yeah, good afternoon, commissioners. Sue, I didn't get here soon enough to hear your list of questions, uh, the ones that I did hear. You know, really, it kind of surprises me, I mean, do you realize you're, you're the liaison commissioner to the assessor's office?
Yes, that's right.
It'd be easy enough for you to give me those questions anytime and, and allow me the time to get the answers to you.
Okay, I'll give them to you. Okay.
Uh, I'm surprised you didn't realize we had that relationship, I mean, you've been a commissioner for three and a half years, and you ask-
Can I just ask you-
-questions from time to time.
Can I just ask you one question?
Go ahead.
When we assess properties, are they assessed for their best possible use? For instance, the Borax property-
It's called highest and best use.
Right, okay, I don't know all the terminology, but that's just a yes or no? Can we do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, subject to any other exemptions and partial exemptions that are allowed by Oregon law.
Okay, and some of my questions came out of inquiries that were given to me just within the last couple of days and some comments, and it bothered me, that's why I asked some of these questions, that's why I didn't get to you right away, so. Looking at inequities, that bothers me. And I guess most of these inequities are coming, well, one of the reasons is because we are so far behind, that I realize you said we were like 18 years behind at one point?
We're on an 18-year cycle, right?
Okay, so, question, the new software that you're getting, is that going to help us improve that?
It will help, and, and you, as part of the budget committee, also allowed us additional resources, uh, so we put another appraiser on, and, and, you know, given some time, we will reduce that 18-year cycle, probably to something closer to a six-to-eight-year cycle.
So, do you have any timeline for doing that? Just, just curious.
Uh, probably takes six to eight years to get there, sure.
Six to eight years to get there?
Right.
Okay. So what is your goal for this year?
Our goal for this year is to probably do physical reappraisals on, um, four to five thousand properties.
Okay, so-
That's not including the properties that we go and visit for, uh, building permits.
So that 18-year cycle, we're going to get it down to what this year? I'm just-
I haven't mapped that out.
Okay, just asking, so.
Can I ask a, a quick question? I know when we did last year at the budget committee, we, we did, um, give you two more positions that you requested, have those both been filled yet? I, I think you said one, would, have they both been filled? I know you said you also lost someone as well.
Well, last year, at last year's budget cycle, not, not this most recent budget session we went through, um, what I was given was two and a half new FTEs, but one and a half FTEs was subject to legislation going through that, that put the, uh, Curry Pilot Project in place, which essentially would have had the state and the other districts share in one and a half FTEs of resource for assessment. The legislature didn't pass that, so, that's not money that, that we've looked to spend, because, you know, my request was contingent on getting that money. We have the other FTE, the, that you gave us, and, like you said, we've last, we've had a couple of people approached in the last year, and so I'm still down one person-
Okay.
-that we're doing interviews for.
What I'm asking is if you get that second person, which I, in my personal opinion, now's the greatest time to hire people, because there's a lot of people I believe work, looking for work right now, that might be, you might find a little bit better cream of the crop.
There are a few more people showing up in the-
So what I'm wondering is if you were to get that other person, um, you're saying it, it would still be four to five years, you think, to get down to a, a six-to-eight-year role?
We got 23,000 properties in the county, it takes a while to get through them.
So I'm just asking, it-
And so, if we can cover four to five thousand properties a year, well, four thousand a year would get us down to six years, so.
Okay. Commissioner Boyce, you had your hand up?
Thank you. As far as Borax goes, unfortunately, they have folded their tent, at least, hopefully it's just temporary, but it doesn't look too good, uh, which is a sign of the economy where we're at, uh, what I just communicated, that concern I have, I think mostly we all share that, that, uh, what's going to happen to our citizens, our businesses, our employers, our, our whole program, the capacity for people to pay their bills, so, um, I don't, I don't want to overstate it, but, uh, I'm just glad, right now, we're in a little bit of a holding pattern, or at least should be, and trying to determine where, where the future's going to be, with support for our essential services, as you pointed out, Commissioner Pash, um, yes, uh, but we have to be able to make the case that if, whether it's, you know, I, I'll use San Francisco, one of the most beautiful cities in the world, nobody's going there now, because it's a mess, and their rates and their fees and all that are so high, I just want to be on guard for that a little bit. I don't mind competing with Bend and, and Florence, all the above, uh, I think we'll come out fine, and, uh, it's hel- it's good, healthy competition, but, um, you know, it's, we're going to need time to assess what has happened the last three months, and I think we're all on the same page with that and doing our best. Again, that's not to throw cold water on this effort, I think it's wise, but, uh, on the consumption tax, it wasn't a meals tax, it was, uh, tourism A and tourism B, basically one and a half percent would raise about $2 million, half of that, almost half of that would be from Delano County, they're paying a 10% sales tax, that's why they come to Brookings, as you, I think you know, uh, where they could pay, uh, 2% and still would save 7% from what they're paying for fuel and Walmart and all that. So, uh, I still think that that is, uh, an option worth, uh, serious, uh, consideration to send before the people, um, and, yeah, I, um, I'm, I'm hopeful that our assessor's office and other county services will be able to jump right in and, and fill some of those spots, but we know, like the sheriff's department, uh, all the above, it's not easy, but, uh, people do want to live in Crey County, we just want to keep, uh, keep that direction flowing, thank you.
Did you have anything further, sir?
Well, yeah, going back to your example of the Borax property, um, I think this is one of those properties where, um, you mean, obviously, Pete, the people you're talking to have a real misconception of the property tax system. In Oregon, there's two specialist, resource use special assessments that are available to property owners. Uh, one is for farmland and the other is for forest land. Uh, the Borax property is specially assessed as forest land.
So are they forestry grazing?
At this time. The special assessment really has nothing to do with what the zoning is on the property. So, um, they qualify for a much lower per acre assessed value than a person that does not qualify for a special assessment. The legislature put those special assessments back in, in, I think, the 70s, it was before my time, I couldn't give you the exact reason they did them, but I think at the time, farm and forest land owners were getting taxed out of their properties, uh, because the use that they were putting them to wasn't even paying the taxes.
So if they took all the trees off, which I've heard a lot of the trees have been taken off- So if they took all the trees off, which I've heard a lot of the trees have been taken off, does that change the um tax rate or no? Just curious.
If they log and don't replant, then the property would be disqualified from.
Okay.
Forest land. So, I mean, if that's occurring on the property and, and you're aware of it, let us know.
I'm letting you know right now. Cause that's what I heard from several sources, not just one, so.
You might need lots, is what you're saying? The lots that they're on, because I'm, I'm sure what you're saying is if they're a hundred acre, if they're a hundred acre lot.
I know where the properties are.
If they're a hundred acre lot and they've only cleared two acres of, of timber off of them, then it's probably still going to fall under the same. Where if it's a twenty acre lot and they've cleared eighteen acres of timber off of them.
But be really surprised that they're not reforesting there because if they weren't, the state forester would notify us.
Yeah, and I'm not sure on that, to be honest with you.
Well, yeah, so I mean, really, what you're doing is passing along rumors.
Commissioner Boyce?
Just, excuse me, you were first, but did you, you, they have three years to, for the repro, reper, reproduction, legally three years. And I'm sorry, go ahead.
Commissioner Melzer?
I just had a question, Jim. Um, with ag, don't they have to report to you that they're taking so much off of it or they're farming it? And isn't it the same thing with forestry? I'm just going, I just remember, hate to use Josephine as an example, but I remember that for people, um, when we would work with people, you know, they would have to prove to us that they were actually a farm or forced use to get certain uh breaks. But I don't know if, I don't know also about assessments to know whether that's across the board or maybe that's just on the zones. So I'm just one, I'm just curious, do they have to, like a farmer, do they have to report to you that they're farming it?
That's correct.
Okay. They have to fill out certain.
So the qualifications for farm use properties are that it must be used for a farm use.
Okay.
And it must produce a certain minimum gross income in three out of five years.
So probably the same thing with this property owner.
That's done through the state and then I think the state alerts.
Actually, actually, you report to the Assessor's Office.
So do they have to do that, say on a yearly basis or on a regular basis, report back to you as to what's, what's happening with the land?
They have to report on farmland, they have to report to us when we send them a questionnaire, when we ask them for the information.
Okay, so how often do you ask for that information?
About once every five years.
Okay, just.
I do one from the state every year, though. I do an ag, four.
Well, you're, you're filling out your schedule app for farm use with your, with your income tax returns.
Right. Commissioner Boyce?
You know, we have a shortage of housing and uh part of the reason, I'm told, so I don't wanna be guilty of spreading rumors, but part of the reason that Borax lost interest, at least and hopefully it's temporary, is because there's an anti-development attitude here. You know, the, the absolute dynamic of what that could have produced for South Curry County, um, you know, all I can hope is that uh cooler heads prevail and we bring them back or do our part to hopefully bring them back. But uh, there is, there is a small percentage of people in Brookings that don't want it. And so they do start rumors and it's really unfortunate because it uh, from what I understand, is a very reputable company and uh they have invested a ton of money and effort and planning and guidelines followed. And if we wanna change land use planning, we have to go to Salem. That's not a county issue, that is, that is a uh land conservation and devel, development commission situation and we, we have failed over the years, forty-five years on that, thank you.
So when the Borax property gets plotted for homesites? Um, the property will be removed from the special assessment, uh, pay five years back taxes on that property based on the difference between what it was assessed at and what it's, what, what it would have, had, would have paid had it not been in special assessment. Um, and then, of course, once they start building the houses out there, we'll, we'll be picking up those properties. I think, you know, my understanding of the Borax project was they had planned to put two thousand homes out there. That's gonna put some value on the rolls, if it ever happens, you know. I mean, they've been talking about doing the Borax project ever since I've been county assessor and that's been a few years. Um, but if they had two thousand homes on out there at, at a, you know, a median value home, um, you know, say five hundred thousand, really, what that works out to by the time all those assessments are on the roll at the county's tax rate is an additional maybe four hundred fifty thousand dollars in taxes a year for Curry County.
Yeah, for Curry.
It's not as much as you think it is. And I'm just talking about Curry County government, I'm not talking about the other taxing districts. So I think I calculated years ago, um, in order to replace uh the forced receipts that we were losing at the time, it would take another eleven thousand homes in Curry County to replace the three million, three and a half million dollars in taxes that we were getting at that time. So, you know, I, development is good. It does, when we, when you get the values on it, does raise more in, in property tax. But four hundred fifty thousand, I mean, would that even cover the extra police protection you'd need for two thousand new homes in the county?
Um, Commissioner Gold, you had mentioned updating the comprehensive plan and zoning and, and you had just briefly mentioned that too. So I have spoken with the planning department on that and we talked about this again last August, I think, when we did the housing declaration. The comp plan is grossly out of date and so is the zoning code, so they do need to be updated. One of the big challenges we have right now with putting housing in um the unincorporated areas is the plan shows a lot of, and I'll use Harbor as an example, it shows a lot of that land as agricultural, so it's zoned agricultural. That made sense when that plan was created, but since then we've lost a lot of farms there or they've been fragmented. So it really is time to revisit that and see if some of that land should be rezoned to maybe residential or something. Because then it would open it up for development. So it does, it definitely does play a role in um getting more homes on the tax rolls, so.
I have another question, once we get everything in the computer digitally with your tax program and so forth.
All assessments are in the computer.
Okay, they are, but with the new.
And they're all available to you through GIS.
Right, right, but is it possible?
And they, they are available to the planning department and those other departments that you mentioned through GIS.
Okay, so would it help to have some sort of alert system going on when, like the um, the permits? They sometimes give permit, um, what is it called? Provisional or use permits that aren't for plans, for permits and so forth, conditional use permits? And they're up after a certain time. So is there some kind of a way that we could get an alert system going that, hey, it's time these people come in and, and renew their permits or get their assessments updated, that sort of thing, so that it can be coordinated between the departments?
I don't know, I don't know what you envision as your alert system, but uh the system al, already does provide that we get copies of their building permits when they issue them.
Okay.
So the Assessor's Office knows when they issue a building permit.
So do you go out right away and assess that property or reassess or?
The assessment date is January first of the year, so we do most of our new construction reappraisals from November through March.
Okay. I just, I just think we have some, this low hanging fruit sitting there that we could be getting some.
I don't think there's the low hanging fruit that you think that there is.
I realize that the county only gets approximately six percent, but what about all the other special districts that rely on?
Well, even without regard to the other special districts, when somebody takes out a building permit, the assessor gets a copy of it and we go and we do an appraisal on it.
Yeah, and, and then we've got the problem of homes that don't have permits, I know that's not your problem.
Though, no, it is our problem, I mean, we just have to discover those through physical reappraisal, going door to door. And we've been picking those properties up since the beginning of time. I've just been reporting them to the, the Board of Commissioners.
Yes, you have.
For, for the last six or seven years.
Right, and I've seen a lot of those same pictures.
And has code enforcement worked with you and, and the amnesty program? I mean, was there much gain from them, that at all or no? I see the smile coming.
I, I don't think so. I think, I think they found some properties that we already had on the rolls.
Okay.
Um, if the amnesty program produced anything that we weren't aware of, um, I'm, I'm gonna say it's probably less than a handful of properties. Now, that doesn't make it a bad thing. I mean, the amnesty program, the people came in and, and talked about the fact that they built something without a building permit. So if they got their building permits and we sent inspectors out there to look at their properties and they got the appropriate building inspections and if they passed those, now we've got appropriately built properties that are, that are safe. And, and to me, that was the big thing about the amnesty program was to, to be sure that the structures we're building in Curry County are safe for human habitation, right?
That and resale, yeah. Make sure whoever's gonna buy the properties is protected by the code.
Mm-hmm.
Well, what I'd like to do is if we could, is start to make a plan. I mean, I, I, I believe that we will have one bite of an apple this fall.
Excuse me, is that all you need, got, need from me?
Thank you.
As you know, I will respond to any questions you send me, so.
Hold the sheet, how's that? It's all written out for you. Thanks.
So um, if we, if we could start to look to plan, um, in maybe thirty days or so to get a group together to start to look at ways to um, to get something possibly on a ballot measure so that people in the county can look at exactly where we are and um, you know, are, are the, the needs. If, if there is that dire of a need right now, I mean, I, I personally, again, I'm, I like to be proactive and I can see our Sheriff's Department is going to have to grow quickly and they are going to have to have more resources. I'm not trying to instill fear into anyone, but anyone that can't see that things are going to come to Curry County, um, um, I'm, I'm pretty sure they are. Commissioner Gold?
Just one last comment on the consumption tax. Um, I was told that the, you know, if we have tourists paying the consumption tax, we could probably deal with it. And I said to Julie this morning, well, how could you, how could you determine that it's a tourist buying the, the groceries or whatever? And she says over in Hawaii, they have a special card that's used by the, the locals. And then others have to pay the consumption tax if they don't have that card, so that's something to consider too.
Okay, so based on that comment, um, Commissioner Pash, are you looking for one group to look at transient lodging tax issues and another one to look more on the consumption tax side of it and have like two.
Why do you think there would be such a big conflict? I, I, I just think it's a, an overall conversation about, you know, what to look at. And I, I, I know you, you may have a, someone that owns a hotel that's gonna only wanna talk about consumption, or consumption taxes and, and someone that owns a store only gonna wanna talk about. But I think the people in the group would be smart enough to, to decipher that.
Okay.
I would just like to see a large enough group of diversity that one, one vote won't matter, you know, one vote won't sway anything. It'll be a large enough group that we can all sit and talk and, and come up with a concise.
Are we looking at um kind of reinstating, you know, we had a citizen revenue task force? And then we found out that it had a, and we had actually made an appointment to it and then we found out that that task force actually, when it was set up, had a termination date in it. Are we looking at reinstating something like that and getting the group together to start talking?
I think that would be a good idea simply because you could get people from the community, business people or other people who are interested um, to get together and come up with ideas. I don't think all the ideas are gonna come from three people or four people.
And I also think it would be good if, let's say, we're looking at, um, you know, the fairgrounds to be here and, or, you know, they're gonna get some, if, if you're looking at raising TLT, have, have a representative of fairgrounds here, have a representative of Harbor here um to discuss, you know, okay, your hotel's going to pay into this, so let's have Harbor here as well, Port of Harbor, to discuss why they need part of that money. And let everyone make their case, let the sheriff come over here and, and discuss, this is what I see coming down the road and what we're going to need and I might not need it at this moment, but a year, two years from now, I see this happening. And have those people as part of the conversation as well, um, so that, you know, Commissioner Boyce, or I might not be able to tell someone, you know, how, how or why they need this, but the sheriff will make it clear why he needs it. It's like the, the K-9 program, I heard for a long time, nobody wanted the canines here. Look what they've done. I mean, these can, this K-9 unit has, unit has been unbelievable.
So is it the board's preference to have this group come up with some recommendations in time for the November ballot?
Yes.
Okay.
And if we don't make it, we don't make it. But that would be my preference, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, that would give us three months. These will be ready by August, I presume, right?
Yes, so we'll, I'm sorry.
That's okay, um, I have tons of information on the consumption tax, uh, based on, basically, now I can't remember if it's one and a half or two percent.
I thought it was one and a half.
Yes, I, I think you might be right there, but um, it got a lot of work within the Oregon State Legislature as a pilot program back with Commissioners Waddle and Rhodes, I wanna say two thousand fourteen. Um, and the one and a half percent would raise about two million, as I mentioned earlier. Anyway, I have tons of information on that, but I did have a question for, for you, uh, just quick clar, clarification. You mentioned the port, do you mean Port of Brookings Harbor on, and not all the ports or jointly or?
Um, you mean talking on the hospitality zone?
I think that's what you said, um.
So.
So that, but that's very interesting, by the way.
Yeah, so it's, I, I was just using Port of Brookings Harbors as an, as an example, so.
Great.
Um, it was an idea that was introduced um along the I-5 corridor. I don't think there's any in Oregon right now unless maybe there's been some established in the last year. But basically it is businesses in a zone, what you identify on a map, they pay in and then they also control, you have this board who controls what you do with the money, you know, maybe it's you're buying um li, um light pole, light poles or benches or doing streetscaping or something to make an area um attractive, so more visitors go there and spend money.
Kind of like Main Street?
Kind of like Main Street, but in the unincorporated areas, you don't have a Main Street. Or it could be on top of a Main Street.
Okay.
Commissioner Gold?
I was just gonna ask, were those businesses able to vote on this, whether they wanted to manage that, number one? Number two, whether they would want to be taxed?
The, it's a fee, not tax.
A fee, yeah, okay.
The example that I saw, it was set by um the board and they did not have a say on it. So, but I think with, that's something we'd have to look at because people may not even be interested in that.
Well, and with businesses hurting, I would hesitate to put any extra fees on it at this point.
That's not what you said at first.
Although, although that's.
I, did I misunderstand?
I think you did.
Okay.
The, the fee of a TLT, the, the people, the, the business doesn't pay it just like this. It would not be a fee that the business pays, the customer pays it and then it goes to, to the person or to the area that the fee's been designated to. I wanna read a couple of things, these are Oregon travel impacts that uh was, Commissioner Melzer gave me this morning. Curry County, and these are commodities, uh, these are strictly commodities categories. Uh, food stores in two thousand and nineteen, visitors only, these are visitor only, spent eighteen point seven million dollars. Um, food service. Food service industry in Curry County, visitors only, forty-two million dollars. Transportation and gasoline, visitors spent thirteen million sixty-four thousand dollars. And in um.
That's just it on the.
The other one is, yeah, I think it's a total of everything. Um, food service, accommodations, food stores, arts and entertainment, retail sales, transportation, gas, everything was a hundred and eighty-nine million dollars. And that was actually up.
That's for Curry County?
I'm sorry, a hundred and thirty-nine million dollars. That was, and, and every year they've been going up um two to three percent and one year it went up four percent. So we are going up every year on an average of two to four percent. So we are going up every year on an average of two to four percent on an annual basis for tourist revenue being brought into Curry County.
So can you, Mr. Chair, man?
Yes.
Can you, I don't have that information, but I'm sure Director Melzer will provide it. Can you say where the one hundred and thirty-nine, what, one hundred and thirty-nine million, what that number again represented?
It represented the food service, which I just gave you some of the breakdowns of that, what the food service was, which was basically of the thirty-nine, a hundred and thirty-nine million, make it a hundred and forty million.
Just food service?
Food service was thirty point four percent. Accommodations was twenty-one point eight percent. Food stores was thirteen point four percent. Arts, entertainment and recreation is twelve point six percent. Retail sales was six, or twelve point five percent. And transportation and gas was nine point four percent.
That's all of the hundred and thirty-nine million?
Yes.
Thank you, that helped me a lot. So I want to read something real quick here, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
This really kind of interests me, the use of the, of the quote, "zone of hospitality" rule, unquote, in the workplace. The ten-five rule, whatever that represents, also known as the zone of hospitality rule, is a well-known guiding principle for extending courtesy to customers in service industries. The rule instructs whenever a staff member is within ten feet of a customer, the staff member must make, I, oh, never mind, I'm reading the wrong thing, but it.
That's good, those are like best practices, yes.
Yes, great. So I apologize, Mr. Chair, I was reading the wrong one. I won't go back. But the hospitality zone, if it was used within our ports in some growing, promoting fashion, that, that sounds like a, kind of a neat thing to me, at least initially.
There's also one thing that this county doesn't do, but we could do, cities have urban renewal, counties can do urban renewal districts. I guess the reason why I hesitate to bring that to you is it's a lot, it's a lot of money to set up and it takes a lot of oversight, so. May not be the best option for our county.
Well, before we stop on this, we have a public comment from Mr. Barnes.
Thank you all, David Barnes. I've been listening to this, I've been, I remember this conversation going back years now. A gas tax would have to be countywide. We don't have any gas stations in the county itself. There's only two gas stations, I think, that are in an incorporated county. The consumption tax that you're talking about, good luck making it tourists only, because if you recall, it was just about a year ago now that this panel put up a non-binding emergency question on a ballot last May, and it was, I think, eighty-three point six five percent of the people in this county said no to a consumption tax. The TLT, I, right now, something you could do on a TLT is add a dollar a dog. You know, you're charging people already, most people who come to this county bring dogs with them. Throw a dollar a dog on there for people who come into this county. You know, what Dave Fortman said about the amount of dogs we have here, I see people in all these parks, they all have dogs with them, so that's extra money right there. The, you also, the TLT, sales tax, gas tax. With the gas tax, there's something you, I think that you need to understand. Curry County is still paying some of the highest gas per gallon in, in the country. My parents live in South Florida, they're paying a dollar twelve a gallon down there, you know? We're paying two fifty here still, you know? It's, I, I, you know, I have to remind you, the people in this county, seventeen point seven percent of the people who live in Curry live two hundred percent below the poverty level. You know, seventy percent of them are over the age of sixty-five years. You know, twenty-six percent of the people who live in this county are disabled. There's only barely twenty-five percent of the people in this county that have jobs. Our, our average, our average family income in this county is sixty-one thousand dollars. That's twenty-five percent below the state average. You know, twenty-five, we have seventy percent of the people, of those people who are working, over seventy percent of them make less than forty thousand dollars a year. You know, if you're going to raise fees, I, you know, I understand the need to fund government, but you've also, I've watched over the last year or two, a year and a half now, as everybody gets an assistant, everybody gets a car, everybody gets all these things. You know, as a citizen, I'm forced to cut back when I don't have the money that I want to. I would love to live a grand life and be able to, to do all kinds of things, but I don't have that kind of money, so I got to cut back and I got to cut things out. And, you know, before, I, I've watched this, you know, just since the beginning of this year, this commission has spent over, probably close to three quarters of a million dollars you've committed since just the beginning of this year on softwares, new hires, a hundred thousand dollars last week on software and a feasibility study. You spent, you committed to three hundred grand for a financial software program. You've spent thirty thousand dollars on a strategic plan. You know, the money just keeps going out and out and out every week. And, you know, before you start asking the people in this county for more, I'd like to ask you to look inside yourselves and start cutting back some of your own expenses. You know, that's, I mean, it's, it's tough all around and, and you're, US government are no different than every household in this county. There's just not enough money to go around anymore. You know, the dog license fee you're going to put on now, you're going to start enforcing dog licensing at twenty-five dollars a dog. Somebody who doesn't have money, you know, twenty-five dollars a dog, if you have two dogs in your house, that's fifty bucks. You know, that, for me or you, that's, that's lunch out up on the docks in Banden. For other people, for a lot of people in this county, that's a week's worth of groceries. And, you know, it's not money that, that this commission is going to get. You know, there's laws about where dog licensing money gets spent, just like there's laws about where the TLT gets spent. So you don't get the money that you're going to collect from dog licensing. That goes into animal-funded things, just like TLT goes into tourism. So, you know, I'd really, I just urge you, you know, before you start trying to take more money out of the people's pockets, start thinking about a little bit of your own, you know? Maybe you guys take a pay cut, you know, across the board, you know, something like that. You know, show that you've got some skin in this game, too. So that'd go a long way to selling anything you want to add on to the people, you know, if you get some skin in there, too, so, thank you.
Commissioner Boyce?
Yeah, I think the reason the TLT passed was the citizens, because they trusted that, and we did a fairly good analysis on setting up the percentages. Twenty-five percent going to law enforcement. What's, was it seventy percent goes to tourism promotion? So we just have to be careful, and I'm not saying the board is promoting, you know, going after the tourist dollar, but in a fair, equitable way, it might be acceptable. I just want to be careful what kind of message we send, again, when we're trying to compete with other areas. That's all, Mr. Chair, thank you. Oh, other than we need to live, you know, I voted against some of the spending. Been hard decisions, but, you know, we got to live within our means, and points well taken, thank you again.
Again, I'll, I'll defend some of the spending. Mr. Barnes mentioned a lot of that, or not a lot of it. Some of it is covered by grants, some of it is still pending, that is being looked at for grants. And I believe if you've got a program that saves the county, you know, a thousand hours a year in labor, that money can be deferred to the use, or the purchase and, and/or licensing of that software. So there, there's different ways to peel an apple. What I'd like to know is, can we set something up, if it would be all right with the entire board, workshop again in about a month?
Sure, what I was going to do is bring an ordinance forward for, at next week's meeting, because you'll have to have an ordinance to appoint this committee. And then we can start advertising for it, and they can start meeting and report back to you in a month. Start reporting back to you in a month.
Do we need to be that formal? Can we just have a blue room, sit down, and everybody just chew the fat? And, I mean, why does everything always got to be a committee and ordinances? Why can't we all just sit around?
Have an ad hoc group.
Talk and yak about things, and probably half the people are going to get mad and leave anyway.
That's the workshop.
Yeah, so.
It's just a public record meeting.
And just advertise it, and people in, in the community that would like to be involved in it that are going to be fruitful and, you know?
So just, I'm going to, just real quick, I'm just going to put on my planner hat for a little bit. Sometimes it's, most of the time, it's more productive if you have a group come up with a skeleton that the public can discuss. Otherwise, it's kind of a free-for-all and anger and what are you doing? And you really don't accomplish much, but however the board wants to proceed with it.
I really think we'd be better off having a committee, simply because when you ask someone to do something, it works a whole lot better than putting an ad in the newspaper and say, hey, come one, come all.
Okay.
At least, that's been my experience.
All right, I guess we'll do a committee.
Task force.
Task force, whatever you'd like to call it.
Okay.
All right, is there anything further? That being said, this workshop is adjourned.